This the law was perfect. I wouldn't be.
Uh, the May thirteenth, twenty twenty four Laramie Planning Commission meeting, roll call, please, Ryan.
Madam Moore.
Here.
Has their way.
Here.
O'Toole.
Here.
Priscillik.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
And Moody.
Here.
That is six present, zero absent, one vacancy.
Okay, great, we're all here. Um, next on the agenda is approval of agenda and minutes. Um, are there any changes to the agenda or do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Uh, is it a second from Donald? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right, agenda is approved as presented. Um, next to the approval of the, uh, of the minutes. Of, um, the April twenty second, twenty 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 four meeting, uh, is there, uh, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented from Madam Moore? Yes, a second?
Second.
Second from Schneider? All those in favor, approval of the minutes, say aye? Aye. Aye? All those opposed, say nay? Okay, minutes are approved for the April twenty second meeting. Um, next on the agenda, citizen comments on non-agenda related topics. No action can be taken. Is there anybody out there that, um, has something they want to say? No one on this, on the big screen, um, no one out there, so we'll move on to the next, next item, planning commission and staff reports and comments. Derek and company?
I'm gonna run through a few of them and then I'll turn it over to Philip for the last comment. Um, so just so everybody knows, um, we're still in the midst of community cleanup week, month, as I call it. Um, it used to be a day, then we moved it to a week, now it's a month, but really it's community cleanup month. And so what we're doing is working on cleanup as the snow melts. Um, our community enforcement officer is working on that. Um, he is, uh, uh, had quite a few groups already volunteers, so if you're interested in doing any of that, uh, please reach out to our offices and we can get you set up with a place to go do it. You got a civic organization or whatever you're part of, it's another great way to, great thing to do, so just kind of, little spring cleaning, tidying up around our community, wind blowing trash from all winter and, you know, get stuck in the snow, so, um, so yeah.
Question. So if, if you're, if you're not part of a group and you're sort of a lone ru- wolf that wants to pick up trash, um, can you fill up a bag and set it on a corner or what would be the process for a single, a solo?
You want to lone wolf it, we welcome it. Um, yeah, no, perfectly fine. Uh, just contact our office. Tell us where you're gonna be at so we know where to pick up said trash bags, so we're not picking up something else. Uh, but yeah, just let us know where you're picking up. That, it helps us coordinate groups and people because if ten people all go to the same spot, we're not picking anything up, but if we're getting to different places, we then also too, we can send our per- people through and pick up the bags that are like left there. So you're not hauling it back to your house or things like that, so.
That'd be Saturday, pretty much?
Whenever you want to do it. Just, you literally can call us, s- tell us where you're gonna be at, do it whenever you want, whatever works for you.
Okay.
Um, uh, what you're probably thinking of, a long time ago, we used to do only one Saturday. Inevitably, we would pick the worst Saturday of the, of the month. It would always be like snowing or raining, or it had snowed the night before and be like five degrees and no one wanted to do it. And so we give them multiple weeks to complete it. Um, it's just a way to engage with the community. We take pictures, try to get people involved. Uh, we're also coordinating with the University of Wyoming on it, and so it's just a really good program, but, uh, uh, we've extended it so that we don't have to worry about one day ruining our fun.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. Um, another note, uh, the, uh, you know, you have a vacancy currently on the planning commission. Uh, we did do, uh, the city council did do interviews. Um, and if all goes well, they will be appointing a member, uh, John Evans to the, uh, planning commission at the next city council meeting, which is two weeks basically from now, so. Uh, so just so you know, should have a full board soon if the council approves their nomination, so. Um, a few other things to put on your calendar, uh, Western Planner Conference, uh, Western Planner Conference is a regional planning conference. Um, in the past, we've talked about YOPAS, that's the Wyoming Planning Association, we're part of Western Planner. Western Planner includes, uh, Idaho, Utah, uh, Nevada, uh, nor- New Mexico, the Dakotas, Colorado, and basically western states and planning, and the conference is being held in Cheyenne this, this coming summer, August seventh through the ninth. Um, here's what I would say is if, if this is something of interest to you, reach out to me. Um, I would like, if you are interested, even if it's for a day, maybe to pop over there, uh, I might be able to pay some of the fees to do that, and since it's within driving distance, it's easy to jump over there, maybe go and see and experience some of the different sessions that'll be presented, everything from housing to engineering to legal matters to mobile workshops. Um, you know, about two hundred people usually attend, give or take, and so it's a nice little conference. Uh, we did it in Laramie in like twenty sixteen, and so just a great opportunity to kind of get exposed to planning related, uh, topics and issues if you're interested, so.
So, so that's a, a, a more regional conference than the one that we had here a couple of years ago?
Correct. Yep, yep. Um, and, and like I said, it's western states, so you're talking about western planning issues, which are the things that we more deal with often than some of the maybe really, really big picture things, so. Um, another item to note, um, this is a long ways away, but it's, will come fast. Uh, March twenty ninth through April first of twenty twenty five, um, in Denver, Colorado, will be the National Planning Conference. Um, the National Planning Conference rotates around throughout the United States. Um, I think at this last conference, there was something like five thousand people there, so it's huge. It's usually why, it's usually US and Canadian planners for the most part, but you do get global planners there too, so just for now, just put it maybe out there and think about it, it might be something of interest. Uh, uh, with that conference, uh, because it's in Denver, it just might be a good e- experience if you're really gonna wanna be in this field, might be something really unique just because it's so close, so. Um, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Philip to talk a little bit about the west side.
Chair, could I ask Derek a question?
Uh, yes, yes. Uh, is the agenda for the Cheyenne meeting posted anywhere?
For the what?
Cheyenne meeting with the regional.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you guys, I'll send you a link this week sometime and just with the whole website, uh, we're starting to work on agendas. Uh, we just closed sessions, so we're not, we haven't like populated the full agenda or anything like that, but it'll be coming out the next few weeks.
And what are they called? What's the entity called? What's the conference called?
Western Planner.
Western Planner, okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Philip.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Um, regarding our west side vision project, we will be having our, um, final draft presented on Thursday, this Thursday at the Lincoln Community Center from five to seven P M. It's more of a, uh, community engagement, uh, workshop, uh, listening session, um, that's gonna be held to culminate that effort.
And this, which it's next week?
This week.
Oh.
This Thursday.
Thursday, okay, okay.
This Thursday. Five to seven P M. And then you, it'll be before, uh, planning commission at the June tenth meeting will be wrapping everything up. The students will be here presenting, um, and we can answer any questions as well. And then on, uh, July ninth, it'll be at city council for a work session there, so that project's wrapping up. But I'll, I'll send you the draft. I know there's been questions from some commissioners as far as survey responses and such. Once we get closer to that June tenth meeting, we'll s- we'll send that out once it's all finalized, but we're reviewing the draft right now.
Through the chair? Yes, so how will the two hour meeting be organized?
For this Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we are planning to have boards set up at the Lincoln Community Center. We also have, um, the three of us will be there as well as the two interns, so we'll have five people, more of an open house session where there'll be boards around with the key findings, uh, we'll be able to engage citizens that way. It's not gonna be a formal presentation, it's, uh, more of, and we'll be passing out cards as well with the, with the link to the final draft. And with those cards, they can also go and get a free ice cream from Soda Pit, who will be there, the, um, the, uh, food truck to try to encourage some additional, um, community, um, support and attendance.
So, through the chair again, uh, what will be presented to the community is what you think the views of the west side are, is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair, it's, it's, it is what we heard culminated into final document with the section on, I think, to your point, um, the implementation measures, we do have suggestions there as, as in city Laramie should explore an overlay district, city Laramie should explore changes in dimensional standards and so forth. So there are measures outlined in there, um, as, as a guiding piece from this effort.
If folks on the west side are one or two people on the west side, dissent, uh, and think that this is not adequately reflecting their views, will those views, if rational, will they be incorporated into quote unquote final plan? Or is the final plan, like Joe Stalin liked to say, the final plan?
Through you, Chair. Well, i- in the planning field, it's always a working document, so I mean, if there are citizens and there is like a voice that is not captured in the plan, which we, we've reviewed it already, it's, it's a pretty thorough plan, about a hundred pages done by these two great interns, so feel like they captured a lot. If there is something we didn't, then yeah, certainly we'll have to include that before it comes in front of this commission. And of course, the public's gonna be invited again to, you know, the work session here as well as the city council, so they'll be able to hold us to that.
Yeah, yeah, Derek.
I think, I think too, I'll just say, I'm sure we're gonna get somebody that's not gonna agree with that, and that's okay. Um, the reality is, is this is the first step, and those voices, let's say dissenting or in agreeance, are gonna wanna continue to stay on top of as we maybe take the next steps, and there's probably gonna be things we're gonna probably have to dig more into, I think, um, but that's okay. Like we said, this is, this was our first initial br- blush at trying to, just trying to put our hands around this, uh, neighborhood in terms of really hearing what they have to say, and I think we've done that, so, and I think that that's good, and so if, if I don't have somebody dissenting, I'll be surprised, I guess, so, um, but it's good, though, so.
The reason why I bring that up is that a little birdie told me, it was a very small bird. A little birdie told me that, uh, at some of the sessions, or maybe it was just one of the sessions, and the people at the front of the room, you guys, were doing a lot of talking, and the people in the rest of the room weren't able to do a lot of talking.
Well, what I would say is that in that first meeting, I was exactly correct, because that's how it was set up.
Okay. I'm just trying to give you a little heads up here.
But at the second, guess what? They could have stayed there for three hours and rotated and talked to us for, I don't know, how long were we there? Two and a half hours? Two and a half hours, and no one did, so.
And I can't imagine why.
No, no, no one came up to you guys to talk about it?
No, 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 what I'm saying is if somebody really wanted to, felt like they didn't get a voice at the very first meeting, which was more presentation style and an intro to the project, was that our second, our second meeting was very engaging, one-on-one, lots of personal, we broke them into small groups purposefully so that they, we could engage even people who might not speak in a big group, because a lot of people don't like to speak in a large group. Um, also too, they could have called the hotline and talked to our interns every single Friday from the day it started till pretty much the day it's ended. Um, not many people did that. Uh, they could have wrote letters, they could have come in and set up individual meetings. So there's, there's lots of opportunity, um, which is what we try to do in these processes, you know, is give people a lot of ways and avenues to try to get their voice heard, so.
So the meeting on, on Thursday, Derek, will be, um, boards and informational, uh, things that, that say what's in the draft, and then the, the, whatever dialogue happens is sort of infor- in informal between the interns that are at the boards or, or you folks at the boards, it's not, it's.
Yeah, I mean, you know, to give these some insight, I mean, like when we, when we hold these meetings, like this one will be presenting what we heard, we take notes, we kind of track things, you know, we, we, we keep, we try to keep on top of it all because it's all part of this bigger, broader process. Even though we're presenting what we heard in the meetings and what we got out of all the surveys and everything like that, like I said, probably someday, sometime later down the road, we're probably gonna be doing another plan, right? Or we're gonna be maybe exploring a zoning district or looking at regulations, whatever it is. And when we get to that point, if we heard some little birdies during this last meeting say certain things, we might take, take note of that so that we can start to circle back as we go into the next phase. And so that's, I mean, we're kind of always doing that, trying to track, trying to understand, so.
Okay, and so, um, on, on June tenth, that's gonna be a work session?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I can say one.
Yeah, Philip.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the little bird, um, but you know, it's kind of interesting, it really was a, a great first session that we had over, that the one that, that you heard about at the Lincoln Community Center, and we didn't intend for it to be a presentation in that manner, and, and I'm just bringing this up because um, the, the model that we went with was the same as kind of the workshop that we wanted, that we want to do this Thursday. Um, but just, you know, with boards set up, separate conversations, not kind of this herd mentality where minority voices aren't um, as, you know, uh, not welcome, but not as forthcoming, usually. So what, what happened at that first meeting was really interesting was it was a work session from, I think it was, we scheduled it from ten to twelve in the morning, and the, everyone came at ten. Ninety-five percent of those that attended came right at ten or, or before ten. And there was one or two chairs sitting around, and one thing led to another, and before we knew it, everyone was sitting in a chair expecting a presentation. So we, we tried to, we tried to explain that that wasn't the format, but we were overruled by the, uh, participants. They all wanted to be heard as one voice, and it's quite interesting, even though as we fleshed out this project and these voices more, we heard, yeah, that's one voice, but there was, there was even in that crowd, there was others that didn't feel comfortable sharing, so we definitely took that and changed up the process. And, um, so I just want to make that clear that, that we went in with the best of intentions, but as we all know, you can do that, and the, the road to hell is paved with good intentions, right?
Anticidants.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think we certainly had an earful at the two meetings we had on the alley. So I think the community did not, uh, shy away from voicing their opinions, so hopefully they'll feel like doing it again.
Thanks, Philip. Um, that's added from, from staff. Any, any comments from, from the commission?
Um, if I could interject, I, I, I was gone during the Stormwater Focus Group meeting in early April and missed the, whatever summary had happened, and I forgot to ask to, ask about it last meeting, so um, if Donald or Tom, if you could just sort of say kind of what, what, what happened at that early April meeting and sort of where we're going from here?
So, very quickly, since you were gone, uh, the charges will be based on an impervious area fee for each home and business. Uh, the cost to the est- uh, to the city was estimated by Aaron Murray would be around, um, four million dollars for capital expenses, and that omits new hires, administrative and customer service costs. It would vary initially from one point seven to thirteen million dollars per year for the first ten years. We had an overall estimate for the cost of the project by which time we will all be pushing up daisies, uh, being somewhere north of a hundred and thirty million dollars. Uh, the initial goals will be met at a cost of forty million dollars. There will be a presentation to the city, uh, on May twenty eighth, I think that's correct. Uh, and they already have parcel by parcel data, in other words, they know exactly the size of the bill to send to Chair Moody. Uh, there will be one more meeting of the Stormwater Group after that sometime in June. And, uh, Jake asked an interesting question, how many, uh, communities, you know, outside of Laramie uh, have been cu- have cut some slack to businesses, especially small businesses, which have large, impervious services? And, uh, the outside consultant, Elizabeth Treadway, said, really answered that, but she said she didn't think that stormwater drainage fees would chase off small and large businesses, and she had never heard of that. That's it.
Okay, thank, you, you said, you said, um, the initial goal is, is forty million?
Forty million dollars.
Okay, and, and, and May twenty eighth was what again?
Uh, talking to the city council. And then they'll come back for the fourth meeting with the Stormwater Focus Group sometime in June, but I don't have that date.
Great. Thank you, thank you, Donald, appreciate it. Okay, um, no other comments, so we'll move on to disclosures, ex parte communications, and potential conflicts of interest, anybody?
Yeah.
Commission?
Uh, Chair, I'll be recusing myself for item eight under the, uh, variance, um, twenty-four oh three. For the sign height and the electronic messaging center sign.
Okay. Um, on to new business. Um, first up is, um, final plat dash twenty-three dash oh three, Spring Creek Village, second filing of the final plat. Uh, Derek, you're, you're up.
Chair, commission, um, this is the Spring Creek Village second filing final plat. This is a final plat that proposes sixteen residential lots, uh, lo- an open space trail lot and four, uh, commercial lots located along Boswell Drive on about a seven acre property. Um, this is, uh, done by Spring Creek Storage, uh, which, uh, is, uh, Jim or James Stevens, and, uh, is a property that's zone B one as well as R O B, which is residential overlay for business district property and B two, uh, up with R O B as well. Um, I, what I'm gonna do with this, with, with this is, there's actually a lot of background on this project. Um, this project went through some different preliminary plats, ultimately culminating in a, a settlement agreement that allowed us to get to the point where final plats are now being submitted and we're reviewing them as a city. Uh, I, I'm really not gonna go into a whole lot of that here. Um, it, I tried to include that background as well as lots of information if you really wanted to dig into it, but I think what, what I do want to kind of go over is kind of where, where we're at today is in terms of the project, and so you know, with, with the plat, we do have a preliminary plat that was approved. Um, this preliminary plat is a hundred and thirty-five, uh, lots with a hundred and twenty-seven, or twenty-three of them as residential lots, and then the remaining are commercial lots, and what you'll see is you've got one large commercial lot, which is a large storage facility that's kind of south of Boswell and west of Ninth Street. You then have some commercial lots that are located along Boswell Drive, and then the remainder of the subdivision is residential lots that allow for anything from single family to kind of attached housing, um, duplexes, three units, row housing, uh, you know, kind of a mixture of there depending upon what they decide to build as they move through the process. Um, if you take a look, there, the preliminary plat is included in your packet and kind of shows you the layout. Um, you've got a road coming off of Boswell Drive on the south and a road coming into a large looped road, um, off of, uh, Ninth Street. The lo- project that's before you today is a subdivision that will plat the lots that are kind of located along Ninth Street as well as, um, uh, the commercial lots that are located on Boswell. Um, in your packet, the, the first map that you get kind of shows that layout and shows what's being platted. And like I said, you have a series of houses that will face Ninth Street with access off of the rear alleyway, a rear loaded alleyway essentially, so you won't have driveways onto Ninth. Uh, the reason for that is those driveways onto Ninth would slow traffic, um, Ninth Street isn't, uh, is designed to move traffic, and so we don't want all those people coming in and out of there. And then, um, like I mentioned, the four commercial lots that are located on Boswell, and then a large, uh, lot that'll be dedicated to the city, there'll be Porsche, a portion of it, it'll be detention, but then also accommodate the first segment of trail along Spring Creek tra- along the Spring Creek there, uh, creating a trail network that'll connect kind of into where you see like the Maverick and stuff further to the west, as well as eventually further to the east, all the way to some of the work that you're seeing being done around, uh, La Perle Park, so. Um, this subdivision, um, has gone through kind of the normal review process as we would, um, with subdivisions. Uh, we do send this out to all staff members within the city. One, they provide us any comments that they might have, but two, they would review it for any of the comments that were included during the preliminary plat process. Um, overall, uh, there's no zoning changes or anything like that to the property. Um, like I mentioned, Ninth Street is on our major street plan, so it's something that we, uh, took into account during the preliminary plat process as well as the final plating process, it's why we don't allow the driveways and vehicular access directly to Ninth Street. Um, as I noted, we do have the trail being, uh, constructed, that's shown in our Parks and Rec master plan, and is why, uh, that is being included as part of this project as well. Um, the land that's being dedicated accounts for the requirement for land dedication, uh, that is needed for these lots. It's actually more than what's really needed during this phase. So when we look at a final plat, we do consider whether final plats meet all the conditions of the preliminary plat. You'll see, we kind of included all of those in there so that you could take a look and see, um, this project does meet those requirements. Um, in addition, uh, we do take a look and ensure that the final plat, one, you know, does it meet the substantial compliance of the preliminary plat, and it does, it meets the same layout essentially as what was approved during the preliminary stage. Um, all the improvements associated with the site have been reviewed by the city and are, are, are complete and are, are, will work for the subdivision. That would include water, sewer, stormwater, streets, and then, uh, that any other type of application or agreements or anything like that would apply. Um, like I mentioned, we just note that because there is a settlement agreement with this, and it does comply with all those requirements as well. Um, with final plats, we do mailed notice, posted notice, and, uh, uh, notice in the Laramie Boomerang. Uh, we did send those out and we received no public comments related to the project to date. Um, staff does, uh, recommend approval of the final plat as presented, and so kind of with that, um, I would be happy to take any questions. The applicant and their representatives are here as well if you have any questions for them, so.
Okay, we could do the applicant and then, and then ask you guys questions, or you want to do it?
Yeah, I'll read.
Yeah, yeah, bring, bring, we'll bring the applicant up, and then, then we'll ask questions of both of you.
Mr. Chairman, Kelly Hafner with Civil Works, um, the applicant's representative. I also have Jason Stephen here today, and we'll just add a few words to complement what Derek has said. This project has been on the books for a long time, if you look through the staff report. Um, obviously, part of the initial construction, we did Boswell Avenue between Ninth and over to Corona Village in that area, and then the storage unit facility was constructed south of that. A little bit of the history on the commercial lots that were moving here, when we first started this project, say around the two thousand nine, two thousand ten range, uh, we visited with the chamber, and there was a lot of discussion and a little market study, and that, at that time, um, they were looking at commercial lots of that size, and as you can see from the preliminary. And as you can see from the preliminary plat that went forward, that's still part of the plan today. So, uh, we'd like to get that part of the project going. We did the initial infrastructure with that, a lot of it with the uh initial phase. But we're adding a little bit more with this current phase. And I think. Oh. Other than that, like I said, it is a little challenging site to construct on. But as you can see in the neighborhood, I mean, Mister Boswell and his gypsum and and plaster plant. Left a few little treasures in there, but we're 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 dealing with that as well, so. And we had some really good contractors with the first phase, and if you've been out there, you can see everything seems to be holding up pretty well. And with that, we're looking forward to moving on to the next phase. And I'll have, uh, again, this is Jason Stephen with the developer, if you'll have anything.
Yes, Chair, uh, Commission, just wanted to introduce myself, I'm Jason Stephen, uh, owner of Gateway Construction. But also representing uh the Spring Creek Storage Development. Um, just as already mentioned, um, you know, it's been a long time coming, we've worked pretty hard on this off and on over the years. And I think we finally come to agreements and got everything worked out and to where we can make this project work. We really look forward to to building back in Laramie again. I was over here building. Early two thousand eight, nine, ten, around there, and it's been a while since we've been here, but we look forward to being back. And hopefully offering the Laramie community a, let's call it more affordable. Um, housing option with some twin homes, townhomes, um, but a quality, more affordable option, which I think we all know. Is in desperate need and not just here, but everywhere. Um, but just if you have any questions about the development or what we plan to do, um, I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, thank you, Jason, appreciate it. Um, okay, so we'll open it up to Commission to ask Derek and the applicant and for uh for questions.
So, through the Chair, uh, two questions, one is, I'm not clear where the detention pond will be, is it outside the red lines?
Uh, Chair, Commission, if you look, are you looking at your map by any chance there? All right, let me just, I'm gonna do the same and I'll just tell you exactly, so no, it's it's in that red line. But if you scroll, go a little bit further, go four more pages and go to the actual plat.
Oh, oh, I missed that, sorry.
You're right, it's it's fine, it's it, what, the reason I'm telling you to go there is lot one. Is of block one is where you wanna be looking at. Um, it's kind of the long weird finger that's kind of along Spring Creek. Um.
Okay.
Imagine the area closest to the alleyway and closest to the home lots is where you're gonna have detention at. And then the trail actually runs along Spring Creek, so it's not up against there, it's down kind of at the corner there of the alleyway and that borderline, so.
So I, and I had a second question, that is, and this is just for my information, what are the challenges of building on gypsum? If the gypsum is very superficial, is there something you have to do in terms of foundation? Cause my house is on Spring Creek, and there's, there's a certain amount of heaving that takes place.
So, uh, Chair, Commission, um. There's a lot of different things that we we did, so we worked in the Fall Creek subdivision the last time. Um, and we learned a lot from that experience and we had several engineers helping us out. What we found to be the best uh solution is to over excavate, sometimes several feet. Use a product called GeoGrid and then bring in an engineered fill, um, compacting that back on top of the GeoGrid and then placing. The house, for example, on top of that, and then also using a really good base um under sidewalks and driveways to help. You can't eliminate it one hundred percent, um, it's just, it's a really tough soil and conditions to build on. Um, but I think that for the most part, we were able to mitigate most of the problems and had pretty good success and at least in the Fall Creek area.
So, so you can't dig all the way through the gypsum, there's gonna be some gypsum under the houses and then you gotta ameliorate that problem.
That's typically what we ended up with, sometimes you end up getting out of the gypsum a little bit and into some other material. But it's all been so, I don't know what you would say, it's all been so meshed up and with the the plant that used to be there. The groundwater's high, so we have to mitigate that, so there's, there's a lot of challenges with it, and sometimes it's on a per lot basis. Sometimes this lot might need this, you know, change or this, you know, uh, mitigation technique. And then a different lot might need something completely different, and the next lot might be dry when we open the the foundation hole and the next one might be full of water. So, none of these will have basements, these will either be built on a slab or on a crawl space. Um, we'll use uh sump pumps in the, if we have crawl spaces, we'll put some pumps in the crawl spaces to make sure that they stay dry. Um, so we do a lot of different things. Uh, it's important to note that, you know, there are a lot of challenges with it, so, um, that makes it even more challenging to make it uh an affordable. Project, um, so I think that, you know, but we've been working on this for quite a while and we're pretty confident that we can come in with a a well-priced home. Um, and just for, you know, to help out the community.
Which, which are very welcome, so really happy to see you guys doing this.
Um, I I I have a question for you, um, Jason, so when you over excavate. I I didn't catch, are are you, are you putting different material in? Uh, and and how how deep will you be over excavating, you think in general?
Last time on average, we were about three feet, three to four feet deep, um, on the over excavation. Then we would lay a layer of GeoGrid, we would bring in an engineered fill, sort of like a road base. Um, something that we could compact and actually test to make sure that it was, you know, being compacted appropriately. Um, and that will handle the bearing capacity necessary for a house to be placed on top of it. A lot of times when we would go, we might go a foot and then realize that we're still seeing too much sponginish, so we'd put another layer of GeoGrid. So it's kind of on a per lot basis, it doesn't always, it's not, we're gonna do this on every single lot, there's a lot of times, well, you know, every lot, we bring an engineer out on site. To do an open hole inspection, to make sure that we're all in agreement on what the best mitigation is for that.
So do I understand that like for the for the roads and the and the city, the city service stuff, you've got standards that uh. You're gonna have to meet with with city for over excavation and road base and so forth, and it'll be a a continuous over excavation or whatever. For for those, for those elements.
Yeah.
But so for the individual lots, I've I've after you put all the cities, the city stuff in, then you just say, okay. We're 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 selling these lots and whoever comes in to to build a home, you'll just have to deal with that over excavation. In in the footprint of the of the um of the home, that's.
So we're the gonna be doing both, at least that's the plan currently. That doesn't prevent us from selling lots to other builders, but at least at the beginning, our plan is to be a part of the infrastructure, the developer, but also. We're all in a related party, we'll also be building the houses, so we'll be in control of that as well. Um, so, but if we were to sell house, you sell lots for other builders to build houses inside the subdivision. What we would do is we would require that they meet certain conditions prior to building. Because we would then at that time be building next to another builder, and in which case, we wanna make sure that we're all on the same page and that our drainage works correctly. And that we're all utilizing the same mitigation procedures, or at least, you know, the same theories and using the same soils reports and same engineering. To make sure everything stays stable within the subdivision.
Is is that sort of a template or boilerplate of of techniques and evaluation and construction? Is that something that you work with the city on for those individual lots?
When it comes to the.
Something that that you you give to every developer that that comes to the table.
Right, so we had a geotech report done, or it's in the process of being finalized now, and that will have foundation requirements and recommendations for foundation construction. If another builder were to come in and build here, they would be given those reports and then they would have to agree to abide by them.
But I mean, when you drill bore holes and stuff like that, you know, you're not doing every lot, you're 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 making a general statement.
Pretty close. We're pretty, we're pretty close to hitting every single lot out there, just so that we make sure we know going in what our plan is. But even that's not a guarantee, so when we do that open hole inspection.
It's a lot of holes.
It is. Um, when we do, so those first.
How many lots were there? Is it sixteen? Or first twelve on that first line?
So we did a hole, we actually did a bore on every single one of those lots, so that we could get a good sense of what we're gonna run up against along Ninth there.
Uh huh.
Um, but then when we open those foundations up to build on them, we're essentially redoing that again. We're rechecking everything to make sure it's consistent, cause again, you're only drilling a very small hole on a very large, even just a lot. So you're only getting a very small sample, um, it's, and that that's great for design and to do like a foundation design. But you still need to verify that once you open the excavation and and see what's actually down there, cause sometimes it's completely different. Maybe that part of a lot might have really good stuff, and then on the other half of the lot, it's really bad, so.
Yeah, you won't know until you do the excavation and say, this is really what we're we're up against. Well, so what, uh, uh, you talked about um a sump pump in the crawl space, I mean, groundwater's like, you know, four or five feet below, below grade over there.
The site in general, we're hoping will be up a little bit higher.
High groundwater, that should really.
Yeah, it's the the sumps are a nice way of trying to mitigate that. So that as groundwater rises in the spring, as it typically does, that if it does get to that level of being in the crawl space, then that pump will take over. And it will eject it, you know, pump it out and put it into the drainage, um, the surface drainage typically, which would then, you know, go into. Um, the storm drainage um of the site itself, so that just keeps that dry. Plus, we use vapor barriers and other techniques in the crawl spaces as well. There is an option where we may be doing some slab on grades, where we actually don't even have a crawl space, where we'll come in, we'll over excavate, build up that three or four feet of structural fill. And then we'll put a slab on top of that. Um, and if the groundwater's too high, that'll probably be the alternative we go with.
Okay.
Can we, if, Mister Chair, we did, uh, I did hundred and fifty five units in Colorado Springs. And we had similar soil conditions. Our water level was much higher than three or four feet, so we ended up doing post tension slab on grade to keep it. But over X is just standard, that's just standard industry stuff.
Yeah, and there's, I know there's a lot of construction debris that's been there and been buried and, um. Yeah, that that is kind of a mess.
It is.
Both from gypsum and previous work and stuff, so.
I don't envy you.
Yeah.
Why would we wanna do anything easy and why did we pick any? But I mean, it's a kind of an eyesore over there, and I think if we can be successful and improving that area and building houses there. And make that not just look nicer, but actually provide some hopefully more affordable options for the community. I think that it could be a real win-win for everybody.
For sure, and then I I echo Tom's comments of someone stepping up to the plate and and doing it, I appreciate it. I I was wondering whether there's any, you know, given the problems of this, of developing on this kind of property. Is there, is there any kind of follow-up, Derek, as to, let's say, five years down the road? Did these geotechnical uh and design elements work um under these conditions? Um, you know, how how to evaluate whether it's working or not?
You want me to answer?
I mean, I, you, why don't you tell what you do first?
For what we do, I'll tell you what we do on on the house part, um, what we do is, um, one, we provide a ten year structural warranty on everything that we do. So I think that provides at least some reassurance that we're here in the event that something doesn't work or it doesn't, doesn't go well.
And 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 the other develop, the developers that that aren't you guys that do it, they would have to have a ten year warranty as well?
We would require that in that subdivision, and it, pretty much every builder does anyway, um, but we actually, um. We've been very good in at least our history, I mean, we've been around for over twenty years, so, um, we've done um quite well. And maintaining a good warranty system, I mean, that's, that's a big part of our business, is making sure that, one, we have good quality product upfront. But then also standing behind it after, after we're done. Um, we did that fall, a lot of that Fall Creek work, so I think that history in itself shows us what works and what doesn't work. The challenges that we learned from that project, um, I think we, you know, we know how to mitigate those moving forward. Um, but again, even when we did run into issues, we were there to fix them when they did come up, so I think that, um. I wouldn't recommend anybody else do this area, the only reason I'm willing to do it is because we've already done it once. And it, and I believe we were pretty successful at doing it, we built the storage units. I think our system behind building Boswell worked well, and I think it's held up pretty well. So I think that, you know, we use, we continue to use the same contractors for building the roads and doing the utilities. Um, because we've all been there before and we know how it works, so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, Chair, Commission, I think I'll, I think what I would add is, you know, in this, in the situation that we're talking about is, you know. We've, we've kind of got two areas, you've got your public improvements, things, roads, pipes, sidewalks and things like that, you know. Those are a city standard, we're following standards and they're based upon soil conditions and they change in different parts of town depending upon the soils and things. So in this area, we know we've got some issues, and so that's why there's certain design criteria. When you get to the building side of things, so physically putting in a home, um, just, just as it was described. Their plan is to do those homes, they are planning on doing them, that's not the case in most situations. Most projects in Laramie, the developer is actually usually different than the actual builder. So in the city, on other projects, we may see just someone following and meeting building code requirements. Now, they still have to look at soils, they have to still look at things, they can't just totally ignore everything. However, they may not go to the same level as this group is on this property because of what they know. Um, that's just what it is, um, I think, obviously, if you're a home builder and you build a bad home. You probably want that home to be standing for a while so that you can build other homes in the community, it's typically a good business plan. But also too, we know that not every house is built equal, correct? And so, um, they may meet our minimum city building code standards. But if there's some unique thing happening on some property, they may or may not address it completely if they meet all the code requirements. Now, what you're hearing here is someone's going above and beyond, going to that extra measure because they know what they have and they know what they need to do. And they want to build homes now and maybe on the next subdivision, so.
Yeah, I I I think as as long as the information that that you folks know about that, that's that area. As as part of a a template for any developer that comes in, it's not you guys, that they, they're, they're doing things to the same standard of care. Um, under this sort of circumstance that you guys are, that would be be very nice. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from commissioners?
Chair, I've got a question. Excuse me, I'm looking at at the plat and there is a storm line on the west side. That looks to be inside the property line, inside a utility easement. Whose responsibility is that storm line maintenance going to be, is that the city's or is that homeowners?
Mister Chair, that storm line is, cause um Ninth Street is severely skewed to the east. That should sit all within the right of way of Ninth Street, it's between the curb and the new property line, so. There is, um. See some stuff in the city lot up there. But there shouldn't be any, that north-south line should not be in the property at all. Cause we just went through that about where the sidewalk is gonna land over the top of that.
Okay, and it's, I'm looking at the west side.
Yeah, the west side of Ninth Street, that thirty six.
No, the, I'm sorry, the west side of the subdivision.
Oh, the, there is a culvert, you're looking at way over on by the, um. In the preliminary plat, the north, okay.
Yeah, on the far west side next to, I don't know what road that is, but it's really skewed almost opposite from.
Well, there, there's a thirty-six inch.
On Fifth Street.
Okay.
There looks to be a proposed storm line that is running inside of the, inside of the property line.
Okay, now I know what you're talking about, so off Boswell, yeah, we did the, um. The storage units had detention systems built in, and then there was a culvert put across the road. Now, with this phase of construction, we're gonna pick that up back in the street and move it around in the street. Right now, it's just a culvert and a ditch that goes into there, and we're gonna rectify that with a storm sewer line with this next phase. Or with this current phase, I guess.
But then whose whose responsibility would that storm line be, is that the city's then, or it's the city's? Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, okay, that's what I wanted to hear, so thank you.
Sorry for the confusion.
It's fine, thanks, Kelly.
Okay, I have one more question, so the the two detention ponds in the northeast and the northwest corner, um, so those receive the, um. Surface flow from curbs and paved surfaces go into those detention ponds, is that how it works, or is it, that going to storm? What, what goes into the the two detention ponds and how deep are they?
All right, now the two detention ponds, let's start with the one that was presented to you with this phase. It's more or less a soil collection system, it really, um, we needed a certain level of detention before. And what we found is that we would essentially release phase one, which is what's presented to you now for the residential. Is undetained because it's so small.
Now, phase two, because it's uh over in the other corner, it will receive water from a combination of this new storm sewer that we just brought up. That'll be piped through the subdivision. The the intent is to storm sewer the commercial, so we're not trying to run the commercial water through the residential area. Those those lots will have its own storm sewer system that'll go around and connect to the, what is be the future detention area. We've got that weird collection of facilities up there in the corner. And that will be dug out with a phase, with the next phase of the residential area. And then it'll also collect the surface drainage. There's an existing rusted-out pipe, at least the last time I was there, which could have been quite a while ago. That discharges into the creek. Essentially, what we were gonna do is add on a restriction structure to that. Um, and we're gonna use that to help mitigate the water out. Spring Creek is weird because we're getting down to the tip of it. And it gets a little squarely if you want to over detain right at the end. While you're waiting for the peak to come from, you know, ten miles away. You know, that, so we're 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 still gonna work with staff. We're not asking for any kind of a waiver of the detention facilities, because um we know we gotta do them. But we didn't need them with this phase, but we do have kind of a water quality swale that will collect the stuff from the alley and drain underneath the trail system and get to the creek. The next phase will be much more integrated into the commercial and the big residential part.
Pond to the to the northeast, the northwest.
The northwest will be the big one.
Yeah, right, okay, so. Um, I'm I'm kind of a duller, I get I get lost in the, you know, the talking, but so so the so the detention pond in the northeast corner will receive storm water, a little bit of 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 storm, of storm water, hold it and then dump it into into Spring Creek.
Correct. It's more of like a a swell system, kind of a a grassed swell. It'll receive runoff from the alley and a little bit of those rear yards for the end. And then we put a sidewalk chase system underneath the trail, so it doesn't run over the trail. And then it just will dribble in overland into the creek.
How 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 deep is it? Will it be?
Not very deep, I would say six, eight inches. I mean, it's it's really meant to deal with planer flow. Because it it wasn't really meant for detention, because we didn't really need it for detention for this phase. What was really meant for detention is is the next phase, because that's where all the commercial comes together.
Okay, okay, so. It's a little baby, it's a little baby pond.
It it's, yeah, it's a water quality swell is what we're calling it.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from from commissioners on? Um, okay, so we'll move to public comment. Is there any any comment uh out there in the audience or on the big screen? I don't see any. Okay, um.
Mister Chair, if I may.
Yes, you may, if there's a a motion or comments.
At long last, after seven some odd years of work, I would be happy to recommend, move to recommend that the City Council approve the Spring Creek Village second filing final plat, FP twenty-three dash oh three, based on findings of fact and conclusions of law, and wish them luck.
Is there a second?
I would be very happy to second.
Second from Donald. Um, any any final uh questions or comments from commission? Seeing none, let's have a roll call vote on the motion.
Madam Moore?
Hi.
Is there white?
Hi.
O'Toole?
Hi.
Priscillik?
Hi.
Schneider?
Hi.
And Moody?
Hi.
That is six yeses and zero no's.
Okay, good luck, gentlemen. Thank you. All right, next, it order of businesses, FPUD dash twenty-four dash oh one, Grandview Heights and Grandview Heights Estates Final Planned Unit Development Amendment, Derek.
Chair Commission, um, I'm gonna give you kind of the brief explanation of the next two items. Um, these next two items were recommending postponement to the June twenty, or June tenth, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission Meeting. Um, these projects for this, this one and then your next item were really close to being ready for this meeting. But since we don't have a meeting coming up next meeting this month because of Memorial Day. Um, I sent notice and put them on the agenda with the hope that we would make it, and we just simply didn't. Um, just trying to be as friendly as we could, trying to get people on meetings and things, so. Um, we're recommending postponement. We did do public notice, so I would ask that you, at a minimum, ask for public comment. And then also this would notify anyone of the public who's here, which I don't believe anybody's on, uh, that the next meeting, June tenth, we anticipate this will be ready for that meeting, so. Um. Aside from that, that's really all I have. Um, and then I'll give you a full presentation on this project on June tenth.
Thank you. Yeah, Tom?
This is the first uh we I've seen since I've been on the commission. Why, just out of general curiosity, why is this a PUD?
Yeah, really briefly, um, this is part of the Grandview Heights subdivision. Um, if you're familiar, this is the area south of Walmart, the houses and residential development that's located down there. It's kind of, uh, it's got the pathways in it and things like that, right there by Bill Nye Avenue. Um, the new parks going in over there as well. Um, all of that's been a PUD that's been ongoing since whatever, I think I have my staff report, two thousand like ten. Um, so it's been around, or no, two thousand twos or fours when it started, and then two thousand ten it was amended, and then in thirteen. Um, basically, here's why. Um, through the process of the time when that subdivision started, our codes didn't allow certain things to occur, some house placement, roadway width and things like that. We've actually adopted and changed our codes to kind of mirror some of the things that we've seen in the subdivision. Um, and so they're just simply continuing the PUD mostly for protections of like house design, uh, the roadway width, um landscaping, things like that related to the subdivision. Um, you'll see also the next item is a preliminary plat. The reason for that is they have exceeded the amount of changes that they can do within the subdivision. And so they're having to re-p preliminary plat, essentially this last portion of land that they own uh in order to get the configuration that they feel is necessary for development. And so that's that's the main reason why Roderick continuation of the original two hundred and whatever fifty some plus lots that they've already done at this point.
Okay, just curiosity, thank you.
Yep.
So it's kind of like an amendment to the preliminary plat, is that is that sort of what you?
No, this 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 item, the PUD amendment, is actually amending the planned unit development. So it's to incorporate this area that we're talking about, which is a so area south of Bill Nye Avenue. But to reconfigure the lots, in the original planned unit development, they had a different lot configuration. And because it's part of a planned unit development, they have to, they have to make these two things match up. They can't not match up.
Okay.
So the way it's written, so, so that's really what they're doing with this amendment. Uh, we we anticipate a recommended approval recommendation for both this item and the preliminary plat. I mean, it's it's going well, we just couldn't quite get to the finish line for this meeting. It would have been incomplete to present to you, so.
Okay, thanks, Derek.
Yeah.
Um, is there, there, no applicant is is out there, so we'll check that off. Um, is there any?
Public comment?
Yeah, I'm, it's my next thing, I'm gonna say. Uh, and any public out there for for this uh this item, seeing seeing none? Um, any final questions for 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 the lone man standing?
Donald, take it away.
Okay, so I move to recommend that the Land Commission postpone Grandview Heights and Grandview Heights Estates Final Planned Unit Development amended amendment until the June tenth meeting uh twenty twenty-four.
Sir, second?
Second.
Second from Madam Moore, uh, final discussion, boom, 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 seeing none, a roll call, please.
Madam Moore?
Hi.
Is there white?
Hi.
O'Toole?
Hi.
Priscillik?
Hi.
Schneider?
Hi.
And Moody?
Hi.
There's six yeses and zero no's.
Okay, next item is uh PP dash twenty-four dash oh one, Grandview Heights Estates Preliminary Plat. And Derek has already talked about this and some.
Chair, same thing, same story, same reason, it's here for postponement. So uh, this is just the accompanying preliminary plat to allow them to move on to a final plat. But asking for postponement and will present on June tenth.
Okay, any other questions? Counsel and uh the applicants not here? Um, and uh any public comments on this preliminary plat postponement? Seeing none, um, is there a motion?
Chairman or Chief Chair. What a welcome you make.
I move to postpone the Grandview Heights Estates Preliminary Plat to June.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, seconded by by Jake, uh, final discussion? S- seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Madam Moore?
Hi.
Is there white?
Hi.
O'Toole?
Hi.
Priscillik?
Hi.
Schneider?
Hi.
And Moody?
Hi.
That is six yeses and zero no's.
Okay. Well, that passes as well. So long-range planning projects, we have a major street plan. Uh, Planning Commission Resolution, uh, twenty twenty-four dash oh one Urban Systems Programs Requirements. Uh, Philip?
Yes, Mister Chair, members of the commission. So the Urban Systems Advisory Committee reviews and recommends cooperative planning procedures for the urban system program administered by YDOT. They focus on the planning and extension of roadways through the major street and highway plan within and beyond the city's boundaries. A report was presented to USAC at their March meeting detailing a priority list and updates to the major street plan that are adjac- attached in the agenda item and recommended for consideration. I'll start with the um priority list first. So the Urban Systems Program mandates each community in the program to establish a pro- project priority list, which USAC revises periodically, in our case annually. In Albany County, this list is reviewed annually as well. It's a joint effort. Um, the latest approval occurred, as mentioned, on uh March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. So this last meeting was also in March, um, but hasn't been approved yet. So only recommended for approve. So the twenty twenty-three Urban System Pro- Project Priority List highlights projects such as the Corthell Road and Bill Nye Extensions and the upgrades to Bluebird Lane and Thirtieth Street. Um, it was USAC's um recommendation that the currently adopted priorities from twenty twenty-three remain unchanged. Staff agrees, uh, recommending adoption of the same list for twenty twenty-four. Uh, moving to the major street plan. Um, the current street plan also um considered every year. This two uh modifications were recommended uh by the uh at the USAC meeting by staff. Um, the first one was to upgrade Bradley Street from a local street to a collector status between Fifteenth Street and Ninth Street, because you can't drive on Lewis Street anymore. So that connection would allow that cross-town connection from essentially from Fifteenth all the way to Third um via Lewis Street. And then the second recommendation was from Iverson or Iverson from Fifteenth all the way to Third, changing that from a local to a collector status to accommodate changes in traffic, transit operations, and are notably due to the University Wyoming's use of these streets and the close proximity to the university and the new parking garage. This request, along with the proposed changes, will be considered um by this Ford, obviously, this evening, and I stand for any questions.
Commission, any questions on this?
Uh, I was at at the meeting, I agreed with per- pretty much everything, all the recommendations, except I'm still trepidatious about Bradley Street, turning it into a collector since uh there's still, on the north side of Bradley, there's still an awful lot of residential that backs in there. And I just worry that the university is gonna start sending all their buses down there and the people who live in those homes are gonna have a hard time getting in and out since uh there's, for, I think there's thirteen of them left, thirteen houses left, there may be less by now. The last time I counted, there were thirteen and they all backed out onto Bradley. So uh, you know, I I I have a problem with that. Iverson is pretty much fine as a collector street. There's really, I think, only one residence left there that backs out onto Iverson. And that's just east of the uh new parking garage. The rest of it is, for all practical purposes, except the width, is a fine as a collector street. I think it's a little narrow, but nothing we can do about that now. So uh, I would recommend we do everything, but I am opposed to the Bradley change on the major street plan.
Okay, Philip, what, you have any comment on that?
Mister Chair, the only thing I'd add is, I mean, with the advent of the dorms, um, you know, additional work is being done where the police station was and and considering even a new parking deck there. From what we understand, I mean, a lot of that is gonna generate that traffic. Um, you know, that that uh Commissioner Madam Moore i- is speaking to, but but I think it's necessary. And and I I will let um Derek speak to this more if I'm not capturing it all, given that I wasn't um able to attend this meeting just in on the discussions. But I think that's the main impetus really is is university is expanding north and some type of higher road designation, we feel would be um beneficial there.
What is the option for not kicking it up?
Building a concrete wall around the university and not letting them have.
You wanna vote on that? Yeah.
Chair, I believe that's out of your purview.
Oh, no.
The only other option would really be to make Flint the collector, but Flint's so close to Harney, it doesn't make sense. I mean, I'm opposed to it because I'm opposed to the university gobbling up all those things. And some of the things the university has done in front of this commission, uh, when they basically said they were never gonna tear down the the building on Lewis, the uh uh that mean, building where all the parking garage was, where all their cars were parked. They said they were never gonna tear it down while it was already on their plans to tear it down. But that's just resentment and it really has no basis in law or fact or for whatever we do. But it would make sense to make Bradley the collector, because the next street you could use as a collector is Harney. They're running out of room to the north, is what it is. But it's just seems like heavy-handed work by the university.
So so Tom, in the, in in this urban system meetings that you attended, you know, was there much um discussion about what the Bradley Street community felt about it or the?
No, Bradley Street community had no input on it, but the residents have had no input on it yet.
Is, wh- when when is there an an opportunity for the Bradley Street folks to weigh in?
I don't know if there is.
Yeah, Mister Chair, I mean, the designation of this as a future or as a collector really allows, if you look at the city's GIS, you can see, you know, on most of these roads, there there is right-of-way available. I mean, the city can really build, um, you know, within the right-of-way and within, you know, within standards, pretty, they're they're entitled to do that.
Hmm.
Um, you know, I I I'm not sure um how much of a of a public input process would be required for something like this, honestly.
Yeah, Derek?
Yeah, yeah, Chair and Commission, I think to speak to two points. One, well, the public process, I mean, this is part of the public process. They, you can be here to talk about any change that's on this map. I mean, it's publicized map, it's gonna be in front of City Council for three readings as an ordinance and a public hearing as well. Um, so that's one thing, but I think to contextually remember what the major street plan does. We're not going out and building this thing right away. All we're saying is that this allows us as a city of Laramie to, one, build a bigger road if we need to. to one, build a bigger road if we need to, but two, use public funds, so federal funds, potentially the minimal that we do get to maybe do upgrades to this road, which was, I think, another main factor as to why this was considered during USAC was to allow us maybe to build this road up to accommodate the buses and the things that we maybe expect because of the university, so that you don't have a potholed street and a street that doesn't work very well for even the people that remain on Bradley. So, um, you know, I think this also too may not be the last time we talk about what road is the appropriate road on the north side of 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 campus as we see changes and things like that occur. We may in five years be in front of USAC again, talking about how we haven't done anything yet, cuz we're not seeing anything, but now maybe the university owns more land and maybe it makes sense to just make it Harney Street or something. We we just don't know, but that's why we kind of look at this, where we try to look at.
It's sort of a long range uh.
This is a long range, and if it's on this map, it allows us as a community to potentially spend urban system funding, so it's federal funding, but then also too, if we see a big development here, we can ask for those upgrades to occur with those development proposals. So, um, this is giving us opportunity.
One one question I have is on both Iverson and Bradley and these university um derived uh improvements, that does does UW assist in the funding or participate in any way on these the city improvements, street improvements?
Yes, they they fund different aspects of all sorts of projects. Um, just depends on what it is. I can't give you a blanket.
But these but these two aren't necessarily, you're not anticip- are you anticipating any financial involvement of UW and making?
Been zero discussion about it. So, could it happen? For sure, but is it for for sure going to? Can't say that either, so.
Okay. Donald?
I'm reminded that the ideology of a cancer cell is constant growth, and that's also true of some universities. Uh, so, my question is uh slightly off topic, but still on topic. Who owns the little segment of uh East Lewis Street that has been closed off to the campusinos of this town? The bit that is now incorporated into the university's dancer.
Okay.
The University of Wyoming.
Oh, they own it?
Yep.
They bought it?
Nope. They, the legislature uh passed a bill in I can't remember the exact date. It was uh during some of the initial construction of some of the first buildings that were located on the north side of Lewis Street. Um, there's a legislative bill that was passed that uh vacates the property and gives it to the university uh for future development.
How extraordinarily generous of the legislature to give away somebody else's property.
Hmm. Yeah, um, any other questions for staff and the quote applicant? Um, from commission? Is there any public out there that wants to comment on on these uh the street plan issue? Seeing none?
Well, since I can find no legal means to prevent it, I will move that we uh approve the USAC recommendations.
Or just that, if you read from the motion.
Oh, I don't have that with me. Get my spectacles out. Move to approve Planning Commission Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh one, requesting that the twenty twenty four Urban System Project Priority List and the twenty twenty four Major Street Plan Map be adopted as presented.
Is there a second? Seconded by by the uh O'Toole. Um, any final discussion amongst commissioners? Seeing none, roll call vote please.
Madam Moore?
Hi.
Is there white?
Hi.
O'Toole?
Hi.
Priscillik?
Hi.
Schneider?
Hi.
And Moody?
Hi.
That's six S's and zero N's.
Okay, so we're gonna move from um Laramie Planning Commission to Board of Adjustment. Um, so remove to adjourn as planning commission and reconvene as the Board of Adjustment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
From uh O'Toole, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Okay, we are we are now the Board of Adjustment. Jake will will leave us. Um, so, um, anyone in the audience uh that wish to provide testimony on this on this matter um before us, which which is a variance, um that need to be sworn in? Is there anybody that that needs to be sworn in?
Give me a sec.
Okay.
I got it.
Go Jake, go.
Uh, Chair and Commission, I am Jake Schneider, um county engineer, and I am the applicant's representative.
Okay, so do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, so you're you're in you're in the machine. Um, so going forward, we're looking at um uh V A R dash eighteen dash oh seven fifteen oh one South Third Street. Um, Joe, you want to give us the heads up?
Chair and Commission, uh today we have before you a variance in relation to a sign, specifically an electronic messaging center sign and a uh monument sign located at uh five two five East Grand Avenue, um more notably known as the County Courthouse Building. Um, this sign is located within the downtown commercial zoning district. Um, it is somewhat of a flag of that district, so it is um surrounded on all sides by B two zoning, but it is nonetheless within the downtown commercial district. Um, as such, um, the downtown commercial zoning district has specific requirements for both design of just the structure itself as well as uh signage. Um, within those codes, um it's specifically prohibits EMCs within that zoning district. Um, primarily an aesthetic function of our downtown. Um, but it also limits monument sign heights and sizes and such things. Um within this, um I, within the staff report, I've included definitions of both uh monument signs and electronic messaging signs. Um, these definitions are somewhat out of the ordinary than what you'd normally seen. See, it's within um section fifteen fourteen as opposed to our normal definition center, so I wanted our section. So, I did wanna make sure that I pointed those out to you before we got too um deep into this. Um this request is both for the sign height um as well as the electronic messaging center. Um, the sign is comprised of two portions. The main portion is the electronic messaging center, and it also has a half oval shape on top, um which it will say the Albany County, have the Albany County logo on it. Um, the EMC will be approximately seven point five feet wide and ten feet tall, um, which will equate to around seventy-five uh square feet of display area. Uh, and the half oval on top um is three point five feet tall and ten foot wide. Um, which comes to around a little less than twenty-seven point five um square feet of display area. Um, within the downtown commercial zoning district, uh monument signs are allowed to be a maximum of six feet tall and have a display area of twenty-four square feet, um both of which are exceeded within this application. Um, and then it also has the um electronic messaging center. Um also notably, our height goes above grade, which is the ground level. This will be located within the planter box, which is already two feet up, so it is thirteen feet tall total. That being said, undeniably, this is against code. Uh, however, um the use within the within this parcel is is different than what you would see normally within the downtown commer- commercial zoning district, and therefore why we would recommend um approval of this, because it does um support normal government function and um truly helps outreach um and the Albany County um reach its its uh main objective of managing health, safety, and welfare of citizens within Albany County. In order to be approved, um there are certain findings of fact that have been included and responded to within this staff report. Um, to keep it somewhat brief, um the main one that would be under under consideration would be the second special circumstances or conditions. Generally speaking, um you see signage within any property as a form of marketing, um, you know, sales. Um, and this one will be more public announcement oriented. Um, this is something that um truly the community needs and what something that Albany County already does by using their temporary um signage that they use on on streets. So, every once in a while, you may see a sign there um for a public health clinic or flu shots or whatever. Um, this will be a more steady place where people can see it um without being having to look. They know that um public announcements are there every time they're going by. Um, additionally, this area is right next to Grand Avenue, which um is a major thoroughfare within the community, state highway, um with major traffic and um the size uh reflects that. Um, it's a much bigger sign than we would normally see, but it is um trying to make sure that people are safe while driving and can easily um see and understand the what is being relayed to them um while driving and entering an area that has more congestion. Fourth and Fourth and Grand um is the first light there and somewhat of a quick approach. Um, additionally, what you see is that the areas around it would be allowed to have um EMCs as well. This is somewhat of a um outlier of a little flag of a DC zoning district, and it is mostly surrounded by B two, which is allowed to have an EMC um by right. Uh um speaking of the general harmony with the the area, um this is located on on um Grand Avenue, um major thoroughfare throughout the city uh and surrounded by B two, which is allowed to have these by right. Um, there is an offshoot um off to the south southwest corner that is still connected to DC. Those properties would still not be allowed to have um EMCs. Um but regardless, um and then the variance, if granted, will alter the essential character of the neighborhood or district um in which the property is located um or substantially or permanently impair the impair the appropriate use or development of adjacent properties. Um, the variance, if granted, um we do not believe will change any of um the essential characters of the neighborhood. Um, EMCs are allowed even uh within three hundred feet of a residential area off of a major s- state or federal highway. Um, also, the EMC's impact on any residential properties on uh Iverson um will be severely mitigated because of the dwarfing building that will be in between them. Um, just so that you all know, this is the current location of their sign. Uh, additionally, um the legal note, this was published in Laramie-Burgomering on April twenty seventh, and letters were sent to property owners within three hundred feet of the entire Albany County property um on April twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, and we have received no comments on this variance um since that time. Um as noted in your, as noted in um the staff report, um staff does recommend approval subject to the conges- conditions based on finding facts of and conclusions of law. There's a sizable amount of um kind of criteria that EMCs need to follow, including the timing of signs, how frequently they change, um lighting, um and those sort of things, which have been outlined within um the staff report. I am here for any further questioning and uh as you know, uh Mr. Schneider is here as well.
Okay, so, um Mr. Schneider, would you prefer that 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 we we pepper Joe with questions so that you you can address our questions, or do you want, would you prefer to to talk and then and then have have our questions come at the both of you?
Questions? I'm open for questions. I'm, I can, I can explain what we're doing. Um, basically, Joe did a really good job. It it's a sign that we wanna have um for public public display, public notifications, um important dates for things like elections or commissioners' meetings. Um, and the sign is pretty large, especially, it's a little larger than what was there, and I have to correct the height. Um the overall height from the sidewalk grade is fourteen feet, not thirteen feet. We've got a little twelve-inch little thing at the bottom, so it's a little bit higher uh by a foot than than what uh Joseph is telling us. But um the 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 size is is large because we need a minimum height size of ten inches for aspect ratio to be able to see it as you're coming in. We don't want little small letters so that uh people are are overly distracted and trying to read a whole lot of um letters as they're driving by. Um, and commissioners, it's a really long word, so that's kind of based on the width of of what it is, based on the letter height of uh eight to ten inches. Um and yeah, I guess I don't have anything other than that um to present to you this evening, so thank you, Chair and Commissioners.
Okay, open up to to commission. Yo, yeah. Um, Don- Donald, you have commission uh questions for Jake and uh?
So, so do we have uh mitigation standards for uh light that goes upwards and uh affects birds that migrate at night? Uh, and are, will they be applied to this sign?
Joseph, you want to speak to the requirements and I'll speak to what we're doing?
Yeah. Um, there are illumination standards, um but as far as specific ones for having to point down, there's nothing specifically that addresses um downward facing lighting um within for standards. Um, so there are in other areas of code related to lighting, but not specifically related to EMCs.
So, would you guys be willing to accept a friendly amendment that added that as a stipulation that uh the drivers can see it and the walkers can see it and the cyclists can see it, but the little birdies flying by night cannot?
That, I believe that is part of the intent of this. We don't wanna, we don't want to have light scatter. Um, and there is gonna be, and I I don't know all of the, all of the exact details of of how it is, but we're gonna write it in our specifications, cuz we don't have all of the detailed specs written yet, but we can definitely include that. The other component of the specification is gonna be um a contrast in lighting. It'll be automatically dimmed at night when it's dark, so it won't be really bright. And then during the day, when it is really bright, it'll be brighter so that you can read it.
Would it be helpful to have that put in as one of the?
Conditions?
Conditions.
That's, I don't think that is um problematic.
Okay. Questions from Commissioners? Okay, I've I've got, I've got some. Um, so, either Derek or uh or or Jake? What would prohibit a downtown business in the DC zone from. Wanting to have a EMC uh on their, on their business? You know, I mean, if you've, you've opened, you've opened the door up for a variance for uh eh. An EMC that is prohibited specifically in that area.
Um, I think that there is always the opportunity for businesses to pull um a variance like Albany County did. However, I believe that this is a distinctly different circumstance than you would see on many businesses, um for one. Um the use and what it will be published is different, um but also just in terms of. Um the ability to orient it um towards traffic, it is extremely different, the Albany County courthouse has a fairly substantial setback. Um and they are able to pose a EMC perpendicular to the road. Um so that it's easily seen, whereas most buildings in downtown would have to create an EMC as a wall sign. Um which would be a little bit more distracting, more head turning needed, um in order to, to see.
Um but, but these, the, 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 the standard of content, you know, that the findings of fact that you're putting out there is that. There's a difference in content, one is public service in the case of this one versus marketing, now that's. That's not established in ordinance or in any, in anything codified that that's a criteria for whether or not. Uh an, an EMC is, is um is allowed and, and we're getting. To the point of determining our EMC variances determined by content rather than straight prohibition. I, do you think that's a slippery slope that we're, we're, we're saying it, it's based on content?
No, not necessarily, um primarily because um we would hold the, every other business to the same standard. But that being said, we do, we do review our, our code every year and make adjustments accordingly. Um any variance that come before the board, we look to see if that needs to be a more substantial and permanent change um during our code review time. And ultimately, um you know, code could be changed accordingly, I mean.
So, so why, if, if, if this was, was something important? You know, to have code change to say, okay, EM, EMCs are gonna be allowed in, in the DC zone. Under these certain situations where it's codified, it's, you know, content based, if it's public service, it's okay, if it's marketing, it's not. And if you're perpendicular to the road, you can do it. If it's not perpendicular, I mean, we're, we're sort of making this up as we, as we go. And I'm, I'm really not that thrilled with getting another variance coming in front of us from, from downtown um businesses. You know, trying to, with, without a real standard other than what we've, what you've made up here in this variance process. Um which really aren't s- statements of fact or anything, they're, they're just, it's a, it's a ongoing logic for. Why to say yes to this variance that it's content based?
I, I understand that, I would, I would disagree that it's, it's not findings of fact, because, you know. It, as you can see from the plans, the, the, the sign is in fact perpendicular to the road, the.
Not based on any kind of ordinance or, or something.
So your, your concern is, if I may, Chair, uh is setting, uh. Uh sure, I, I forget how you would call it, but setting a precedent.
Exactly, and, and you'll, you'll open the door to everybody coming in for, for variance and testing the waters. As to whether we find out another fact that really isn't, isn't part of a, a ordinance discussion or ordinance change or. You know, something that's, that's in, in the rules for allowing an EMC in, in the, in the, in the, in the downtown business. I mean, I, I think this is important because, I mean, I could just imagine Las Vegas happening along Third Street, you know, with, with EMCs.
What was the reason for including it in code in the space, the rationale behind it?
Um so it was not here when, when the code was included, but uh my understanding is that. It's primarily an aesthetic thing and a safety thing um related to where it is in the downtown. Um eh or how the downtown is oriented and um proximity of businesses and what we expect to see. And how, how the downtown grows.
You don't want to see. Flashing lights in downtown.
Those concerns, the, the safety issue as well as the flashy issue.
Now, I mean, this is, this is a somewhat unique building because it is an entire city block as opposed to many of the downtown businesses, which. You know, there may be, you know. Five to nine businesses within, within a city block, um and so the proximity and the frequency that you would see. A sign is way less than you would see elsewhere throughout um the downtown commercial bu- zoning district and so, um. Does it, it relieves some of the, the safety issues just because you wouldn't be seeing three or four right there? One right after the other.
Mr. Chair, yeah, if I may, for the applicant, uh what is the content going to be?
Um Chair and Commissioner, the co- the content's gonna be largely, um. Information related to um like uh important dates for community engagements for perhaps. Uh election timelines and reminders, um assessors, appeals timelines, property tax sale timelines. Public meeting information um on um. High interest topics such as the uh proposed uh wind generation farms, regulation changes, variance changes, tall. Town hall meetings, planning and zoning meetings, um publish and advertise um information. Um and provide communications on items or events like fluke and clinics, health fair, health fair. Um a mole and fire, winter closures of roadways, um and generally stuff that. Um is, would be important to passerby's to, to, to see.
So all the boring government stuff.
All the boring governments, yeah, yeah, it is not a traffic control sign by any stretch of the imagination, we're not gonna put like traffic signal ahead, so. Slow down, so it'll be government.
Alright, well, a- a- at this point, there's kind of an assumption that, that there's not a safety issue. I, I mean, the, the, the size of the sign, the placement of the sign, the reason it's there is to attract the attention of people driving. Back and uh on, on the busiest street in town coming up to, to, to Fourth Street, and so I think there is a safety issue. Um you know, given that there's distractions of people texting and, you know, playing on their smartphone while they drive, and then we've got this, this. You know, good public information concept there, but I, I personally see it as a, as a serious safety issue. Of distracting drivers going down Grand Street, and I, 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 I think, I think we should have that discussion if. You know, we all ag- agree that, yeah, it, it won't cause an accident or be a safety thing uh issue, I, I just don't think that assumption is. Is that it's not a safety problem is correct, or, or anyways.
Yeah, Chair, I, I don't entirely disagree with you, I don't entirely agree with you either, because the, the sign is large enough and we're gonna have small. Short distinct like um informational bulletins, it's no different than seeing a road sign on the side of the road that's informational, it's not gonna be a. Banner that's scrolling through that you have to stop and read, um or.
So it's just a.
It's, it's just. Right, it, it requires eight seconds.
There. Chair, if you don't mind, just.
Sure.
That, we do have requirements for EMCs, the sign will be required to do that, they're only asking for the permission to. Put it at this location, so you do have hold times, um EMC shall have a frame hold time. No less than eight seconds per static graphic display, um then there's transition times and you cannot exceed. Seven um, seven transition and one and a half uh in any given one minute period, so you have. A certain amount of time that you can change it every minute basically, so that you're not, you know, it's not rapid flashing, there's no video or things like that. Also, just since we're talking about the standards to a tools question, uh we do have illumination standards in code. That it will be required to follow, um you do have uh freezing mechanisms, if there's ever a malfunction, it freezes. You know, that's when you, if you're ever driving and see in a crazy town that's got a lot of EMCs, you know, they're like flashing and it's all messed up. It stops that, uh also, it does um is required to adjust illumination brightness. Uh based upon ambient light conditions through a light detector and photocell, this is actually pretty common in almost all these things. And then lastly, um any EMC um is required, cannot exceed point three foot candles above ambient light. Um as measured on a foot candle measure, um this also, there is also some other calculations in here regarding how. Much illumination the sign can have, and basically what happens is when we get these in. The manufacturer pride provides us the information that these things can be adjusted to meet the standard, and that's usually what they do. These things can be made really bright, turn up the volume or turn it down, so that's what the standards we have currently in code. Um so.
Donald. I guess I must admit, I'm sympathetic to the sign, I, I'm just thinking of the last meeting when folks were complaining. That when the work session of the city council took place, they weren't informed and with associated paranoia. That somebody was trying to slip something by them, and this is a way to communicate it, eh communicate information. Eh I'm a little concerned that this could be a really busy sign with a lot of information and people trying to catch it. I'm also concerned if we ever have a visit by Donald Trump, there might be an image here, I don't know, there's images of Stormy Daniels, which could cause a collision. And I would hate to see that happen.
Now, wait a sec, no, sorry.
I've drove by the uh monument sign for the movie theater for a year and a half before I noticed it. So I don't think a lot of people will notice it if it's a standard size. I think a lot more people will notice this size sign because it is bigger, but if you're not. You know, it i- it is for public service and I think that gives it some advantage there, so I think. Informing the public of what the county and the city is doing is a real important part of governance.
Okay, ha- has it been considered to put it on the Iverson side of the courthouse?
Um, Chair, no, we did not have that discussion, we wanted, we thought the Grand Avenue um location would, would have the most visibility.
Sure.
And so that's, if we're trying to reach people, we, we want to get it, have it to where most people go, or more people go.
Yeah, I mean, so you, you, you want, you want the traffic, the, the, the driving traffic to.
I also think there'd be restrictions on it because of the apartment building directly across the street from the courthouse. Wouldn't, isn't there a restriction on how close you can get um EMC to uh residential, to residence?
Yeah, that's correct, this one um is allowed even though it's within three hundred feet of a residential area to exist there because. Of the fact that it is on a major state highway.
And the courthouse is in between the sign and the nearest residence.
Exactly.
Okay. Yes, Derek.
Uh just one thing, since we do have at least a newish member that's hasn't heard of variance before, one thing I'll just note. Every variance is a variance from code, that's where it gets its name, um you do not set any precedent, zero. By approving or denying a variance, every variance stands on its own a hundred percent. As Joseph noted, he is a hundred percent correct, if we see things that we think need change, we bring them to code changes, so just, I'm just. Putting that out there, you will never approve a variance if you think you're not varying from code, because that's exactly what we're doing. So that's all, that's all I want to say, yeah, I mean, it's like, it's, this is what it is, that's what a variance is, so that's all I'm gonna say about it, so.
Did, Derek, do you think that, that this type of um uh of request for, you know, significant. Increase in size and, and area, um. Would, would warrant a looking at an ordinance change for, for um allowing EMCs that are. Uh specifically that if it's based on, on public comment or pu- public service. That anybody in, in the DC zone can, can put, put an EMC on. We, we, would that warrant a, a going to the trouble of a, of an ordinance change or code change?
I'll just say, I think right now, I'm not gonna say yes or no to that because I would want to do more research about it. But often government agencies, which that's your new, you, what we put in our staff report is our unique measure here. Is logically to have different standards for public engagement, outreach, emergencies, things like that, I mean. You know, there's a flood, they're gonna probably put flooding on Laramie River on the county commissioner's side, right, like, and so. It might be something we entertain, we've talked genet- generally about it as staff, but we haven't like dug into it.
Okay, so, so, so what if somebody on, a, a business on Third Street said. I wanted, I want to provide public service, I'm not advertising the beer, I'm not advertising. You know, the dolls that I sell, I'm just a community service kind of business. And, and I want to put an EMC on Third Street looking right down the guts of that street and it's saying. Um, you know, joy to the world, uh treat your neighbor well, um, uh, uh. Go to, you know, the, uh, you know, wh- wh- whatever it is, and it, and it's not, it's not marketing what they necessarily have as a business. But they could sell it as, in the variance as a public service, and then you have the aesthetic being. Being messed with of why you are prohibiting an EMC in the DC district that. You don't want it to look like Vegas down Third Street with flashing with signs and so forth, so. You know, when, when we're talking about the logic for, for approving this as being content based. It may not be as simple as, you know, I mean, I want to serve the county as well, exactly what Tom said of getting that information out. It's just now, because of it's being content based, then we're, we're having to define what is public service announcements. And not marketing, so I, I think it's a, it's a slippery slope potentially where we're going here.
Chair, Chair, to, to answer that question, think that. Uh when, when we're talking about content base, we're giving you some examples just so you have an understanding, it's the fact that it's a government agency asking for a sign. They can, we're not, we're not telling them what content to put on it, that's what they're saying that they're gonna put on it. A business is, we don't regulate content on any sign, any sign can go up as long, if they meet our code requirements, they can put. Profanity on there to.
So it's a variance.
Anything.
It's, it, it's a variance based on it being a government agency.
Government agency in the downtown commercial zoning.
That's a different reason than.
Well, we gave you examples of the content because to try to provide you understanding of what might go on the sign, because most people think of signs as. Commercially oriented, to sell a product, to announce of, you know, that there's four showings at the movie theater or whatever it is. That, that's what we would say, because someone can put up a sign that says joy to the world if they meet our code requirements. People sometimes do that, um not many, because.
But it's allowed in that particular zone.
And that's, that's why, when, in the report, why we talk about the size and the height and where it's at and the location. So that's, I mean, I, I think, I think the content of it isn't the key important factor here other than. Who this sign is gonna be for and what.
Well, that, that, that wasn't what was provided in the, in the, in the staff report, that wasn't the reason, it was, it was content based, so that's all.
Eh, a question, will this be used both by the city and the county?
I see the opportunity for it, but I have not had that discussion explicitly, but I don't see why it couldn't be.
Okay, eh, and just a comment, uh, uh thi- this is not to pile on, although it is fun to pile on. Okay, and and just a comment, uh, this is not to pile on, although it is fun to pile on. Uh, we did have a very large sign that, uh, on Third Street that was up there for a long period of time that was an anti-vaccine sign. And I'm sure they, the person who put that sign up, it was on the southern end of, uh, Third Street, and it was basically people are taking away our freedoms in their libtards like me. Um, and, uh, I could see the possibility of folks looking at this message uh, seeing it as a kind of agitprop on behalf of a domineering local government and wanting to have counter signs. So I'm just saying, we're in that time and that could happen.
Okay, so so Donald, your your comment about the birds and so forth, did did they answer it sufficiently that that it would could be addressed without an amendment?
Uh, I wrote an amendment, but I'd have to have a second or for an amendment. Can I read what the amendment might say?
Go, go, wait a second.
Chair, Chair through you.
We we we, yeah, go.
Yeah. In order to add that as one of the conditions, if it's not, it you have to have a motion and approval, um, as this is not.
Right.
Something normally within code.
So, um, any other discussion from from commissioners on on this issue? Um, is there a motion on the floor?
Do we have to, point of order, uh, to clerk, do we have to have a motion to approve the variance before we can amend it amend it? Okay, I'll take it, uh.
Yeah, Jen.
Just ask, did everyone feel satisfied with his response regarding safety? Is there any further discussion on that? Perhaps the answer is yes.
You've heard my opinion on that, so, um.
I have some concerns about safety, but I think this is, uh, I think we have to balance this. If, uh, in other words, in the past, it used to be possible to get messages out to the public through the boomerang. The boomerang is dying as a newspaper. So getting out notices through the boomerang, as was done in the past, uh, is a much less effective way than it was of informing the public. And this seems like a way to do it. I acknowledge there is, it may cause some problems. And if there is a problem, I think it should be addressed once we know it's creating a problem.
Alright.
Okay.
I move to approve the requested variance from Laramie Municipal Code fifteen dot oh eight dot oh three oh dot E dot two dot C, section twelve. That would allow the applicant to exceed the height and size limit of monument signs and allow for an electronic messaging center in the DC zoning district located five two five East Grand Avenue based on findings of fact and conclusions of law and subject to the recommended conditions.
Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by O'Toole, um, discussion amongst commissioners. Donald, do you wanna do your amendment?
We have to vote on it first, right, before it goes on.
It's part of the discussion.
Okay, I would like to amendment, to add an amendment, so this would be, uh, condition number five. Uh, and the wording is as follows, every effort will be made to ensure that light pollution generated by the sign, which might attract and entrap night migrating birds, will be kept to a minimum.
Is there a second on the amendment?
I'll second that.
Um, Madam Moore seconds, um, any discussion amongst commissioners on Donald's amendment?
I, I have a question.
Yeah, John.
I, I'm not disputing it as an idea, but I don't understand how it would be practically implemented. Like, how would you provide some sort of guidance so that that actually would be those considerations?
I'm a veterinarian. I cut up dead horses, so signs are not one of my specialties. But I trust these guys who do not know how to cut up horses, but probably know something about signs. In other words, I'm thinking of something that, uh, basically kind of a roof on the sign, so light is not going straight up.
You can, you can, can you guys address it?
Well, go ahead. Oh, if you have something to say. I can, so I can somewhat address this point. Um, some of y'all were here when we were talking with, uh, Lamar about signage, um, and that was something that they had mentioned was possible with their signs, um, that they were downward oriented, um, lumineers of some sort. Um, and so I think generally speaking, it's a fairly camp common prac- practice as far as, um, Jake being able to implement that. I guess I'll let him explain.
Yeah, I think physically what happens is there's kind of like this, um, this tube that comes out so that it projects it out and those tubes can be shaped or pointed downward so that light pollution isn't going up. And so that that's what we plan to do.
Derek.
Uh, Chair, just, I I just was replaying the motion in my my mind. I would, I would maybe recommend to to Heisler White's comment, just that maybe e- expressing the vertical expression of light. I think that's what you're concerned with. And maybe clarifying that in your motion so that there's something that we can then restrict, i.e. vertical projection of light straight up. That that's helpful for us because.
Then there's something that actually.
If a bird runs into it, is that taking care, did we take, do a good enough job? But I I think giving us some guidance on that would be helpful.
Wanna try it again?
Okay.
Downward, downward projection of.
So, so let me rephrase that. Every effort will be made to ensure that light pollution generated by the sign, which might attract and entrap night migrating birds, will be generated laterally, not vertically.
Or or downward? Is that, is is downward preferred? I mean, lateral versus, I I thought, I was hearing downward projected as part of the discussion.
I I think either way, I think they can, we can shape them to go however, but I I do think if we point them, it's it's kind of a little ambiguous, I I would think. But as long as I think that the objective is not to project it upwards.
Mr. Chair, for question for the applicant, are you writing the specs for this?
Yes.
Okay, I have no problem. I think he'll do.
Okay, is is there a second on on Donald's?
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, for Madam Moore, uh, any further discussion on the amendment? Joe?
Uh, Chair, uh, I guess I can, I'll hold off on this actually until we get to the main motion again.
Okay. Um, roll call vote on the amendment?
We're just learning of the amendment.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Madam Moore?
Hi.
Could it be read once more, please?
Sure. Uh, every effort will be made to ensure that light pollution generated by the sign, which might attract and trap night night but migrating birds will be generated laterally, not vertically.
Is there a need to use the word every? Seems like to just.
Yeah.
Give me a modifier for.
Rather than saying. Yeah, or or not even say effort, just say that's what's gonna happen.
But that would include a weak effort.
Every effort means that every single thing is directed at.
If I may, I I believe that you could just delete it and say all that together, just say no vertical light.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Try it again, Donald. I love you guys.
We love you.
But sometimes you piss me off.
That's your usual state of fear.
Yes, I know. Jake, say that again.
I I believe that you can just say no vertical light pollution to, in- instead of every effort to be made to prevent it, just chop that first part off and say no vertical light pollution will be accepted or allowed or however.
There'll be a little bit of vertical light pollution, no vertical light pollution. No vertical light pollution. Uh, finish the sentence.
That would interfere with, uh, whatever you had for migratory birds.
Little plenty of little flappy birds, yeah, yeah. Will be accepted?
Will be allowed.
That's even harsher than what Janet suggested.
I've been painting in a corner.
Okay, so it reads as follows, no vertical light pollution that would attract night migrating birds will be allowed. Is that okay?
Second?
Second.
Second from Madam Moore, okay. Final discussion, thank you, Janet. Is that okay? Right on, okay. Um, roll call vote for the amendment?
Sylvia has her hand up.
Oh, Sylvia. Yeah, comment. Or you're you're you muted, Sylvia.
Thank you. I was just gonna say that, uh, Boulder is, they have like a dark sky certification. And all there says is lights must be aimed downward to minimize light pollution and glare.
Okay, this.
Chair.
Yeah.
Through you. Um, I will say that reviewing our current light pollution standards compared to a lot of these dark si- sky communities, we have very similar standards as is, um. I think the the question was whether or not this would specifically address ones related to EMCs, um, which which are light portion doesn't it revolves around, um, like ambient lighting outside of, um, buildings or commercial buildings or whatever, um, and so, um, I would agree generally throughout our our code, we do try to minimize upward facing light as is. But in this section, it could probably be improved to to minimize that overall.
Sylvia, are are you satisfied with that or, okay? So, roll call vote?
On the amendment.
Hmm?
On the amendment.
On the amendment, right.
Okay, Madam Moore?
Hi.
Heiser White? O'Toole?
Hi.
Priscillik?
Hi.
Schneider, or is that accused? Moody?
Hi.
That is five yeses, zero no, one accused.
Okay, so the amendment amendment passes and we're we're back to the main, the main motion of the move to approve. Um. Fine.
Chair, um, I do wanna point out that a motion within the, um, for a variance does need a majority of all members, including your absent member, non-existent vacant physician, as well as the recused physician. So it needs to have four, at least four votes.
Okay, good to know. Thank you for reminding us that. Any other discussion, um, amongst commissioners? Seeing none, a roll call vote on the move to approve the requested variance.
Madam Moore?
Hi.
Heiser White?
Hi.
O'Toole?
Hi.
Priscillik?
Hi.
Schneider is accused, recused? Moody?
No.
That is four yeses, one no, zero absent, one recused.
Okay, variance is approved. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're done. Thank you.